Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to say that, as you can hear the thunder and you've heard the warnings and watches for the day, if we do have any bad weather and we're alerted, then we will take a recess and we have shelter here. You are welcome to join us in the shelter or if you want to go over, you're welcome to do that. But if we have sirens or get notified that it is very bad, then we will take a recess because it is not worth risking anyone for a bad storm. So that's the first thing. And now, I would like to call this meeting to order. I cannot believe that it is the middle of May, May 19th, 2025. Call this meeting to order, please. Let's see. First off, let's have the legislative fair and the--
Do you stand as able and join me in our invocation this evening? Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the City Council of Sedalia. Mayor, Potem, board members, administrators, and staff meet to hear about, question, discuss, and make decisions for our community and its citizens. We are grateful for their service and dedication. We ask your protection for all of our first responders, city, county, state, all who work 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at their own peril. We are so grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic for which so many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for these 250 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all of our military and civilians serving this great country today, here and throughout the world, and bring them home safely to their loved ones. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. And all this is prayed in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Amen. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Okay. The next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. Um, let's see. Let's see. It's on the annexation petition for auto community development LLC. Can I have anything to add, though?
No, I don't.
Anyone care to speak on this this evening? Any takers to speak on the annexation?
Madam President, did you officially open--
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't. Okay. Seeing none, I officially close that. Next, we have approval of the previous session minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and second. Thank you. Now, we will have roll call of standing committees, first of which is Finance and Administration. I will like to give this to Chairwoman Bogus, please.
Thank you very much. Tonight, there's one item for consideration through the Finance Administration Committee, and that will be a presentation given to us by Ms. Jessica Pyle.
So, we're looking at the second set of numbers to compare fiscal year-to-date of payments received. They're on March sales at the stores. This net sales and use tax is down fiscal year-to-date about $45,000 or 1.5%. We had budgeted a 4% increase for this coming fiscal year, so there is a variance of around $168,000. We're off by budget by about $168,000 so far this fiscal year-to-date. The payment that we received this month was lower than last May. Last May, that payment was higher than the average, about 11.8%. So what we received this month was more average than what we have seen historical, even though it's lower than last year. It is more average. The marijuana tax that started at the cash registers in October of 2023, so now we're beginning to see a full fiscal year comparison when looking back at last year. You can see it's off slightly from the prior fiscal year, just a little bit lower. The franchise tax, fiscal year 2026, electric taxes down fiscal year-to-date $132,000. The transportation tax is higher. That's due to an increase in gasoline taxes of 5.2%, higher vehicle sales of 17.2% and higher vehicle fees of 4.3%. And then, property taxes, the majority of those coming in December and January, so that's a low number there. Any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Please, the finance report.
Thank you very much. Now, I would like to move to Public Works. Chairwoman Franklin, you have the floor.
All right. We have four items. The first one, the utility department sought bids for two 2025 Chevrolet Silverado 2500 four-by-four trucks to replace aging units currently in the water department's fleet, supporting continued reliability and operational efficiency. Three bids were received, and the lowest bidder was WK Chevrolet at a total cost of The purchase was planned in the fiscal '26 budget, and the price was less than budgeted amount. Staff recommends acceptance of the bid from WK Chevrolet.
Okay. I would now like to call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 202591, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a bid for the purchase of two Chevrolet 2500 crew cabs for the water department.
Second reading. Second.
Is there any counsel discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Bill number 202591, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a bid for the purchase of two Chevrolet 2500 crew cabs for the water department.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
You have seven yes.
The utility department sought bids for one 2025 Ram 5500 four-by-four with service bed to replace heavy-duty service truck that is nearing the end of its service life. Three bids were received. The lowest submitted by WK Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram of Sedalia, the amount of $79,999. This vehicle is necessary to maintain the department's emergency response capabilities by providing sufficient towing capacity for digging equipment and space for transporting pumps and tools. The purchase price is below the amount budgeted in the fiscal '26. Staff recommends council approval of the purchase.
I would like to call for the reading of the ordinance, please.
Bill number 202592, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a bid for the purchase of a Dodge Ram for the water department.
Second reading.
Very good.
Is there any counsel discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed?
Bill number 202592, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a bid for the purchase of a Dodge Ram for the water department.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
You have seven yes.
All right. Ordinance passes.
The Public Works Operation Division is requesting authorization to submit a grant application to the West Central Missouri Solid Waste Management District F. This grant would support the city's ongoing effort to improve and modernize its recycling program, funding the purchase and installation of a commercial-grade glass pulverizer. The pulverizer will process used glass into reusable materials for local construction and infrastructure projects such as roads, trails, landscaping, parks, and composting. A key application will be incorporating the recycled glass into the city's asphalt mix, which could increase the total recycled content in paving materials to approximately 20%. As landfill fees continue to rise, it is critical that the city pursue sustainable solutions to reduce volume of waste being sent to the landfill. Diverting glass from waste stream not only extends landfill life but also helps offset city's financial match through reduced disposal cost. Additionally, this initiative aligns the broader environmental goals by reducing transportation-related emissions and promoting the reuse of materials within the community. The grant requires 15% local match, though the match is not required at the time of application. The estimated grant request is $412,295, which includes the pulverizer, shipping, installation, and training. The city's match would be a total of $61,845. The complete application and supporting documents must be submitted to Solid Waste Management District by Wednesday, May 28th, 2025. Staff recommends approval of resolution authorizing submission of the grant application.
All right. I'd like to call for the reading of the resolution, please.
Resolution 2132, a resolution authorizing the submission of a West Central Missouri Solid Waste Management District F grant application.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay. The Public Works Operation Department presented a concept of macro paving as part of its strategic planning efforts to repair more street blocks in Sedalia through diverse paving solutions. Macro paving was specifically identified as a priority during the strategic budget planning session, and council approved its inclusion in the fiscal '26 budget. As a result, staff respectfully requests approval to proceed the next purchase of macro paver from Step Manufacturing located at 12325 River Road, North Branch, Minnesota. The fiscal '26 budget allocated $430,000 for this equipment. However, the current contract price through Omnia Cooperative procurement contract is This is an additional maximum shipping rate of $9,290, resulting in a shortfall of $110,346.71. This increase reflects market conditions, including supplier notifications citing tariff as a contributing factor. Further tariff increases are anticipated and can continue to drive up the costs. Additionally, this is one of the final units available at the current model year pricing. Delaying the purchase would likely result in the price increase due to model year rollover. Despite the overage, staff recommends proceeding with the purchase due to equipment's critical role in supporting long-term pavement preservation efforts and reducing reliance on outside contractors. To offset the increased cost and maintain the capital budget target for truck purchases, the staff proposes reducing the number of multifunction trucks planned in the budget from five to four and downsizing two of those from tandem axle to single-axle dump trucks equipped with plows and spreaders. By reducing the number of trucks, we will still continue toward our goal of replacing aged dump snowplow trucks and reach our goal of establishing a long-term road resurfacing plan. Staff recommends acceptance of the contract. The purchase will be made through the cooperative procurement process using Omnia Contract 0577 in compliance with the city's financial management policy.
Okay. I'd like to call for the reading of the ordinance, please.
Bill number 202593, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a macro paver for the street department.
Second reading.
Second.
Is there any counsel discussion on this? All in favor? Anyone opposed?
Bill number 202593, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a macro paver for the street department.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
You have seven yes.
All right. ordinance passes. Okay. I think that's all you have for tonight, Michelle, right?
Yes.
So, public safety, we do not have any. Next, I would like to move to community development, where I would please like to call in Vice Chairman Bob Cross.
The Boys and Girls Club of West Central Missouri is requesting support from the City of Sedalia for the redimmament of its new teen center. Specifically, the organization is asking councils to consider waiving all applicable fees associated with the project, including commercial billing permits, electrical permits, commercial mechanical permits, plumbing permits, and any other required permits as outlined in the city code. The proposed teen center is to be located on East Third Street, will span approximately 30,000 square feet, and serve junior high and high school students. The facility will focus on academic achievement, life, and workforce readiness, and youth mental health, providing a safe, educational, and engaging space for teens during and after school hours. Approximately 75% of the project's funding has been raised locally through generous contributions from community members who believe in investing the next generation of Sedalia's leaders. Represented from the organization's board of directors, will be present to provide a formal presentation on the project and make the fee waiver request. In preparation of this request, staff has prepared a resolution for council's consideration to waive the requested fees.
You guys can come up, give your presentation, please. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. He covered a lot of it, so this might sound repetitive. Uh, so I'm RJ Lindstrom. I'm a long-term board member for the Boys and Girls Club and one of the campaign co-chairs for our teen center project. Uh, kind of wanted to talk to you guys. Several of you were here about a year ago when I kind of gave you an update on what we were doing and our progress at that point, so some of this is a little refresher. Uh, but we like to cover, you know, where we came from, where we're at, and where we're going as a club in this community. So, the Boys Club of Sedalia started in 1960, serving boys out of convention hall three days a week. Uh, and from 1960 to now, we've grown. We serve over 1,700 kids a year in our programs at 14 sites and eight communities. So we've grown not just in Sedalia but all the communities around us. Uh, so like I said, total membership is 1723. Of those, we serve 511 on average every single day after school. And we also do a summer program here in Sedalia that serves an average of 276 kids every single day during the summer last year. Uh, of those kids, 80% are elementary age, 20% are tweens and teens. Uh, and Boys and Girls Club is not just after-school care, it's enrichment programs. We offer over 20 different programs ranging from reading, homework help, STEAM, civic life skills, and service learning. So, we add a lot of value to the time after, to those kids after school. Uh, so that's kind of where we're at now. Where we're going, in 2022, we started a feasibility study. The board started to look at the programs and the kids that we served, and we wanted to do more, and we needed a little bit of help trying to figure out exactly what that looked like. So, we talked to over 40 business owners, community members, staff, kids. We had a focus group of current Boys and Girls Club members, as well as a survey at the junior high and the high school. And what, all that information we got back was that teenagers need somewhere to go and something to do. Uh, and that's something that the Boys and Girls Club is uniquely situated to be able to do for these kids. So that's how we came up with our bold vision, which is the Boys and Girls Club Pro Energy Teen Center, uh, which is, as Bob said, 30,000-square-foot facility. Uh, this is the overall floor plan, um, and you can tell it's got a full gymnasium. On the kids' side, they come in the main entrance, and there's, we split them into high school age and junior high age. They each have a homeroom, games room, kind of a clubhouse, something fun for them to hang out. And then, it goes into the building, and there's workshops and classrooms, a full commercial kitchen, we have cafeteria, and then you can see full gymnasium with all the sports equipment. We got a fitness room, art room, and a music room. And then, the full left side of the building is for the administrative offices for all of our staff. So this facility will be able to handle over 300 teenagers at a time, and we'll be able to offer a lot of new programming. We have a big focus on workforce development for the high school-age kids, but also academic success, life skills, pretty much anything that you can think of. This is our space, and we can do what we want and to maximize the impact we have with the kids, um, which is very exciting for us. So, the plan to get there was in, started in 2022 with the feasibility study and six months of planning. We had to make sure that the money we could raise and the building we wanted to build, that we could put them together and get this thing done. So in '23, we started the campaign, uh, and my co-chair Jake Gishen and I worked tirelessly with a team of dedicated volunteers to start working on donors, donor relationships and raising those funds. And in February of last year, we went public, got a lot more public support out of it. And last summer in June, we were able to secure $1 million in funding from the state of Missouri through the legislature, and shortly after that, another $1.69 million in a grant from the Maybe Foundation, which focuses on capital campaigns for buildings just like this. So we took all that momentum, uh, from the state and from the grant, and in no short part due to our naming sponsor, Pro Energy, we closed the gap, and we finished raising $10 million to put this building together. So, that was in November. We hit our goal, and we rolled right into design, the final designs for the building, construction plans, getting everything rolling to actually build this thing. Uh, so we've already held our groundbreaking because we planned it far in advance, and weather kind of has a tendency to kick construction projects back a little bit. Um, but back on April 5th, we had the groundbreaking. It was a very cold and rainy day, so we weren't even able to hold it on the site, which is on Third Street by the Katy Depot. Uh, but you can see, we had lots of support from legislators, past and present, uh, and we had a really great turnout despite the weather. And, um, we still hope to have construction start before the end of this month, start moving some dirt for site preparation, to start preparing the ground for pouring the concrete and the foundation. Um, so that's our project, and that's why I'm, why I'm here, is to ask you guys to consider waiving all the permit fees that would normally be associated with a project like this, so we can partner together to help Sedalia become a better community and help these kids.
Counsel, have any questions for him?
Yeah. Uh, I think this is great, you know? I think we've needed this for a long time. Uh, one of the things I really like is there's going to be somebody there to help the kids with their homework, and hopefully, they'll be snacked, because kids are always hungry.
We have a full kitchen, so we can feed them, for sure.
That's great. Thanks, sir.
It's a great location. Right down the trail from, from the middle school. I mean, you can't do any better. I'm all for waiving the fees for the permits, but I want to make sure we do the permit inspections for safety.
They would always do the inspections. Yes, yes. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to call for the reading of the resolution, please.
Resolution 2133, a resolution to the City Council of the city of Sedalia, Missouri, waiving permit fees for the teen center for Boys and Girls Clubs of West Central Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
Um, let's see. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. Other business? Let's see. We're going to accept the resignations of, let's see. Did you want to go? Thank you.
We have two resignations, both from the Sedalia Public Library Board, Linda Sunday and Elizabeth Tassoni, both effective June 30th, 2025.
Motion to approve, both.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we'll move to appointments.
Members of the City Council, Mary Drew Dawson, granting new appointments to the Public Library Board. Dr. Catherine Stanley Dietzmann, replacing Elizabeth Tassoni for a three-year term, July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2028. And Virginia Keough, replacing Linda Sunday for a three-year term, July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2028.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next, we shall move on to liquor licenses.
We have one new license and three renewals tonight. New license, special event license for Jeff Wyman, doing businesses today at Lions Club for their Lions Club Cornhole Tournament, the new corporate venue in Missouri State Fairgrounds on May 31st, 2025. And then, renewals for Carlos and Recky Sadio, doing businesses B&amp;B Theaters at 4104 West Main for Sunday Sales and Liquor by the Drink. Benjamin Chaney, doing businesses Smoker Friendly at 1700 East Broadway for packaged liquor and Sunday Sales. And Kathy Getz, doing businesses Break Time Number 3083 at 808 East Broadway for packaged liquor.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next, we will move to miscellaneous items from City Council and City Administrator. Um, and I do have one item that I would please like to discuss this evening. I was contacted by one of the marijuana dispensaries this last week with some concerns about the closing time, and, um, we had a lengthy discussion, and back when the ordinance was written, which, I think you were the only one that was on council that maybe, Bob. Um, so it was written before most of us were on council, they, and it was also still just for medicinal use as well. Um, it says that the, that the business needs to close at 8:00 PM, and I would like to make the motion that we amend that to close at 10:00 PM, or direct staff to amend that for us and then bring it back to the meeting to vote on. Does anybody have any discussion on that?
I don't see anything wrong with that, that would bring more revenues to Sedalia for two more hours.
Okay. Letting them stay open until 10:00 could kind of curb the gray and black market after their PM time.
Okay. So, I would need a second on that motion for it to come back for next time.
Second.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay. Does anybody else have anything this evening that they'd like to talk about? Counsel?
Madam President, um, so you, you had the motion, there was a discussion, then there was a second, but we still would need to do the vote.
Okay. I'm sorry. So any roll call vote?
Uh, just a voice vote is fine on that.
Okay. So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay. So, let's move on to the good and well-for portion of the meeting. Uh, this is the time we've set aside for residents of Sedalia to address the City Council directly. As a reminder, anyone wishing to speak must have signed up in advance using the form located in the lobby prior to the start of the meeting. That form requires your name, address, telephone number, and the agenda item you wish to address. Uh, comments must relate to items on tonight's agenda unless a formal written request to speak on a non-agenda topic was submitted at least two days in advance. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to present their remarks. Please clearly state your name and address for the record when you come to the microphone. This is not a time for debate or dialogue with council members. This council chamber is a limited public forum, and all remarks must be directed to the council as a whole. I would remind everyone that personal attacks on specific city employees by name or title are not permitted. If you wish to file-- file a formal complaint, you may do so in writing through the city clerk's office. Disruptive behavior such as shouting, refusing to yield the floor, or blocking the views of others will not be tolerated, and violators may be asked to leave or remove by law enforcement if necessary. Your comments tonight will be recorded as part of the official public record. We thank you for your cooperation in maintaining decorum and for your continued participation in the civic life of our city. At this time, we'll begin calling for those who have signed up to speak.
Madam Pro Tim, we've had five individuals sign up for tonight. The first one I have on the list is Jack Shibe. If he is.
Jack, would you like to come to the podium?
Thank you for letting me do this. I got a letter from the code enforcement, and...
Jack, could I please have you state your address?
Oh, address, 8344 Highway Inn, Pollock Grove, Missouri, 65276.
Thank you.
Okay. I have some rental houses here in town. I'm a farmer by trade, but the inspector went out there on this property, and my renter put up a, oh, a six-foot tall fence. Now, I don't know how many of you are six-foot, but most of you are close to it. But he got in the back of the pickup to take pictures of the junk in the backyard. My renter said he was going to clean it up, and I complained to you all, and you all said, "Well, y'all could legally do that. Your city attorney said that's okay." Well, I agree with that. That's probably right. And he is cleaning it up, but I don't think it's quite right. If I would take a drone and fly around one of your houses and see you all in the backyard drinking a beer, or enjoying yourself in a hot tub, and take pictures, would that be right? I don't think so. And I think this is a little off-base on this deal. That's my whole comment.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you. Did you want to move to the next one?
Okay. The second individual I have is Debbie Covington.
Debbie, could you please come to the podium?
Debbie Covington, 2601 East 12. I'm talking about finance and admin. According to the city of Sedalia records, you all have not had a finance and admin meeting since March 3rd of 2023, per the city clerk's office. But at the April 21 city council meeting, you all passed an anti-first amendment ordinance limiting free speech. So, when are you all meeting? Why isn't the public invited to these meetings? When you all are meeting, is there a quorum? If you all are meeting and you don't have a quorum, are you doing this to circumvent the Missouri Sunshine Law so the public can't be a part of it? There was no dialogue, questions, or conversations in the council meeting when this passed? No dialogue between the council or interim city administrator or mayor regarding this ordinance? So, this leaves me to believe that you all are either meeting behind closed doors so the public isn't involved, or you're still taking orders from our city attorney and project director. The city of Sedalia hired a community engagement director to address transparency and communication issues with the city, between the city and the public, but this is one of many examples. You all indeed have little intentions to be transparent. The public needs to be a part of the process, and the Constitution, even the Missouri Constitution, protects this. So, you're not only continuing to keep the public out of the processes of city government, but you are now limiting our free speech so we can tell you how we feel about it, good or bad, or the changes we'd like to see. I would like it on record that on April 21, 2025, the city council passed an ordinance unanimously that demonstrates the city does not believe in free speech. On May 5, 2025, you denied me my right to speak despite having my request in to speak five days in advance, and no denial or acceptance per mayor despite no response via email, text, or phone call. Our, the mayor's assistant told me to call him, text him on his city phone, and I did so, and I received nothing. So, please have it on record, our mayor is selective on what phone calls, texts, or emails he responds to. Our mayor or council may not always like what we have to say, but the Constitution does protect it. Free speech matters. The First Amendment is protected and is your checks and balances. Again, I spoke about this before. Albert Reinie had 236 references on April 8. He deserves the first mayor, the first ward city council seat. Again, Sedalia has spoke. In closing, stifling your constituents of their free speech, First Amendment rights, and first wards vote on who they want for first word councilman is, or councilwoman, is tyrannical. Just because you can does not mean you should. Sedalia's voice matters. Please listen.
Thank you.
Ready for the next one? Have Damian Kennedy on, talk about changes to dispensary ordinance?
Mayor Pro Tim, can I interrupt real quick?
Absolutely.
EMA notified me that there's a cell going through Lowry City right now with 140 mile an hour straight line winds.
Oh, my gosh.
That is headed towards us. It should be here prior to 8:00.
Okay.
So, just FYI.
Prior to 8:00?
Prior, yes.
Okay.
Maybe around 7:45, according to the radar, maybe.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, let's see. Damian, would you like to come to the podium? Thank you.
Damian Kennedy, 27831, Third Edition Road. You all actually took up the ordinance that I was wanting you to take up, and you've approved the change, so thank you very much. That's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jason?
I have Jerry Nelson on rules on burn ordinance.
Okay, Jerry, would you please come to the podium?
I'm Jerry Nelson, and I live at 1002 North Grand Avenue. I just purchased the home and moved here full-time in January. And I'm here tonight asking the city council to please clarify the burn ordinance, as I have recently had two situations where a neighbor has started brush fires, where the fire department has responded both times. No citations were given, and according to the ordinance, they were both in default on all counts. They were within 25 foot of a structure, no garden hose, because there is no water attached to the house. They were within 15 foot of a fence, which also joins my property. In talking with Fire Chief Irwin, it is the responsibility of each fire truck or fireman responding to the call to give the citation. They had to put the fires out, and they did so both times. Chief Irwin assured me that they would be given a citation next time, that it would be properly handled. Well, that happened again tonight. With the wind the way it was, there was a fire, a brush fire going, and the fire department did come, but when they heard the fire trucks, they kindly went over with shovels and got the fire put out before the fire truck arrived in the driveway. But the way I read the ordinance, it does not state that strike three and you're out. It does not, I do not want this to be the third time for sparks to burn down my house before the fire truck arrives. I was an hour and a half away when the last fire occurred, and thanks to my neighbor calling me, I was able to call the fire department. You either need to revise the burn ordinance, or the firemen need to be explained for each of the situations, and they need to be told the responsibility of giving the citation. I am asking you to address the situation before myself or someone else loses their home due to negligence of the current ordinance or of the fireman not complying to it. Thank you for hearing my complaint, and may God be with the council in making good decisions in all that they do for the well-being of the city of Sedalia. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
And the last individual I have is David Goodson on the Good and Well for ordinance.
David, would you come up, please?
David Goodson, 1640 Hedge Apple Drive. Guys, this recent ordinance change, it's wrong. Everybody knows it's wrong. Bob, you've got to know it's wrong. Jack, you wasn't here for it. I know when we made this vote, we've got two council members who are new here, who were not part of that vote. But I'd like to know if that vote came up today, would those council members support it? What's the chances of you guys repealing this and going back to allowing free speech? Not to make people jump through hoops, to take people's comments, not to fight dissent? If you were doing a good job, you wouldn't have people at these meetings. But the proof's in the pudding, guys. It's been horrible. Twice in the ordinance, it says subject to reasonable restrictions to conduct and speech. Twice. When is restriction to free speech in a public meeting okay? When? I read the Constitution today. I looked up the amendments. I couldn't find where reasonable restrictions to speech is acceptable. All of you should be embarrassed by that. It is hard for me to look at you and think that you are proud to be American and pass something like this. Absolutely hideous. It is a shameful thing you all have done. Now, I doubt because of the positions you're in that you'll make those changes. I mean, I know some of you have employees, spouses that work as employees here that you can't probably dissent. Some of you were handpicked by the mayor, can't dissent, but the rest of you have the option to do it. I would look at Jack. Would you lead this? Would you be the one that says, "Hey, this is wrong. We should not limit free speech. It's our God-given right in the United States of America," and you guys are trampling on it? Ms. Foster, would you, what's the process for asking you guys to bring this back up? Does anybody in this room agree with what happened? No. Would you see all these people standing out here? Would you see a news station here? Would you see any of this going on if you guys cared about our rights, about our freedoms? I mean, you sit here and hear everything going on. Our sales tax revenue is down. We're making Sedalia more unfriendly to anybody who looks at this community. It's shameful. We should be working to bring our revenues up. I hope that you guys, I want to congratulate the Boys and Girls Club. I think what they're doing is wonderful, but I hope that you guys will keep your word to them, and they won't have to come back here and fight for that permit like I had to. It's all about keeping your word and doing the right thing, and some of you have lost your way. Actually, I'd say everybody that voted for it lost your way. So, please do the right thing and quit being cowards.
Thank you. All right, let's see. I would now entertain a motion to move to closed door.
Motion to move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to post?
You need a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Madam President, we need to state the reasons for going to the close.
Oh, state the reasons. Sorry, I'm getting antsy because the store moving. Okay, so, who did the first on that? Who made the first motion? Okay, so Tina, can you list the closed door for this one here? Please, and thank you.
Closed door meeting for discussion of closed items, vote on matters if necessary, roll call, motion and second roll call to adjourn. Is that what you wanted?
So, if I, Madam President, if I may, this would be a closed session pursuant to 610021 subsection 1 for legal advice, subsection 2 regarding real estate, subsection 3 regarding personnel, and subsection 12 for negotiated contracts.
So, you want her to repeat all that?
No, you can just say so moved on that.
Okay, so, closed door for legal advice, real estate, personnel, and negotiated contracts, subsection 610.021. Now, roll call vote on that?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Thank you.